And now ladies and gentlemen, Steel Cage, oh, Steel's Cage match for City Council. I fell over flat, I'm sorry. It's terrible. Anyway, we have, we have, we have folks in the studio from Ward Six, right?
That's right.
And we have candidates Rick Brown, Michelle Kares, and Michael Ellsworth. So we have three. So now, again, our rules are the same for people calling in.
Rules are the same. You don't have to live in Ward Six to call and ask a question because City Council affects everyone in the city. But you do need to ask a question that all three candidates can answer. So try not to ask questions that target a particular candidate and you should be fine. So you can ask about all the big issues pretty easily and we'll get a response from them. Before we get too far, Michelle, if you would, give us a quick description of Ward Six and let people know what your voice sounds like.
Hi, thanks for having me. Ward Six is, we'll start with landmarks. We've got Good Food Store and the mall. So more specific, it's the River to Mary and Russell to Reserve, generally. There are a few others, but we won't go that deep into it.
You have some outliers there, right?
Yeah, if you're in the city on the other side of Reserve, there's some Bitter at Branch Hill conversations we could have, but that is the general area.
So, so tell us, since you've got the microphone, why, who you are, introduce yourself, little about yourself, and why you wanted to run for City Council.
Thanks. I've been in Ward Six for about five years, and during that time, I've been involved in neighborhood councils, and through those experiences have been exposed to city politics. And I decided that that was something I was very interested in and felt very capable of being a contributing team member. I've been in Missoula for 10 years. I am on the board of the YWCA. Like I said, involved in the neighborhood council, and so just been involved and excited to kind of enhance that through city leadership.
Okay, let's get Michael. Michael, you're over there next to John. This is Michael Ellsworth. So first of all, tell us about yourself and why you want to run for City Council.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be in here, and thank you for the listeners as well. They make a big part of this. My name is Michael Ellsworth. As he just said, I'm a veteran and a small businessman. I came home after serving in the Army and then started a business, used up my GI Bill, focused in history and political science, as well as business and economics. It was kind of a multi-diversity thing, but I was happy. I went to school here at the U. And then-
Can I ask you, what's your, what's your business?
Montana Conservation Resource Development Company.
Okay, alright.
It's a, it's a mouthful, but pretty much just conservation, preservation efforts, and then just small subcontracting, but property management in general. I really wanted to run for City Council because I see a lot of families here in Missoula hurting, low incomes that are just being decimated by bad business practices. And we can see that at a policy level. And then, as well as when it comes to housing and a few other issues. So I really, I'm an advocate for the people. I believe that the City Council should be putting the people's interest as compelling government interest. And that's why I wanted to run.
Okay, so Rick Brown's also joining us this morning. So Rick, lean right into that old microphone there. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wanted to run.
Well, I've lived in Missoula for the last 52 years. I graduated from Franklin Grade School and Hellgate High School. I spent 25 years in law enforcement. I have a degree in police science. And I've not always done the law enforcement in Missoula, but I have worked for the Missoula County Sheriff's Office in the jail. And I became interested in the City Council when the City Council started doing things like changing the one-way streets downtown back to two-way. And I lived here when they were two-way, and they work much better now. And the water system, of course, has got a lot of people riled up and got their attention. Now, this gun issue, even though I've already filed and I'm running for City Council, I would have liked to got in on that. And that's, that's kind of where I stand right now.
Rick Brown joining us, so along with Michelle Kares and Michael Ellsworth. And Dave is actually our caller. So, Dave, you're on, go ahead.
I don't live in the city of Missoula. I live in Missoula County. When I go to Missoula, I have never seen a city limits sign. So I never know when I'm in Missoula until I get to the center of it, more or less. And I'm just wondering what the problem is that they can't use signage to tell you when you're in the city of Missoula and when you're not.
That's a really good question. Alright, Dave, thanks for the call.
Oh, I got one other.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. And how do these three candidates feel about this gun law, this gun ordinance usurping state authority?
Okay, thanks for the call. So two questions. So, Michael, we're going to start with you. Do you have any idea why there aren't any, you know, street signs that say you're in the city limits?
Well, right now, they're trying to lead a big effort to put up a bunch of signs all the way across Missoula. That's been a big undertaking for the last couple of years to get the funds for it. But everything's in place now, so hopefully they will. I do agree with having a good layout signs in case of, you know, emergencies or just basic traffic, so we don't have congestion. But one of the main reasons why is I think they don't want to put up signs previously is because we've been having an inward growth policy, and it's just been really devastating, I think, to the economy and to the people. And there's a lot of other political gambits behind that, too. And if anyone wants to look at it, or take a, you know, their own look into it, then they can. But yeah, they're right now getting up signs, and we just need to have better sound policies here locally.
Okay, how do you feel about the gun ordinance?
I think it's horrible, and just like what the caller said. First and foremost, the City Council doesn't even have the authority to do this. This has already been ruled with the courts, both state and federal. And this is something that has been already kind of been watching to see the Democrats go and bring forth an anti-gun policy, but I don't think it'll be even enforceable, let alone lawful.
Okay, so we'll go with, with Rick. Go ahead.
On, on the signs, I'm not exactly sure the parameters of Missoula change so readily that I don't think they can keep up with putting the signs up to where they're supposed to be.
See, who'd we annex last week?
Yeah, who'd we annex last week? A lot, a lot of the times, distance from city to city anyway is from the courthouse to the courthouse. And, and-
Sure.
We have moved the courthouse since 1884.
This is true.
Yeah. The gun ordinance, it's a, the, Missoula, this is an affront to every gun owner in this, in, in Missoula, and potential gun owner. And quite frankly, anybody that values their rights, this is an affront to you. It's a violation of the Constitution. It's a violation of Montana state law. And there's a lot of opposition to it. It's, it's a great inconvenience if it gets passed. And people jokingly said, well, I'll just go out to Lolo and have a cup of coffee and swap guns. Well, we shouldn't have to be even put through that, even though the coffee shops in Lolo would probably like it. I'm greatly opposed to this or any other gun ordinance.
Okay, so Michelle, grab that microphone, bring it over. And this is Michelle Kares. So first of all, about the street signs, the city limits signs.
Yeah, there is one, just in case anybody wants to go take a gander at it. I've noticed on Mullen coming into town, there's the one that says, "Entering Missoula City Limits",
Wow.
"Hands-free, phone calls only", or something along the lines.
I'll have to go take a picture of it.
Yeah, get out there. But I think that Michael's right. I think the wayfinding signs will enhance that. And I think it's a great question that I will remember to look into. Thanks, Dave. Regarding the gun ordinance.
The proposed gun ordinance, that hasn't been passed yet.
Absolutely. You're right about that. I have gone back and forth, and I'll just let you know where I stand right now. I will, would if I were on council, be voting for the gun ordinance at this time in my decision-making.
Why?
So, the main thing that was the hiccup for me was, is this lawful? Because I don't think we should be spending our time passing things that aren't able to be held up in the court of law. And based on the legal counsel, Jim Nugent's legal counsel, Missoula's legal counsel's decision that it was lawful for us to do, based on his analysis of state law, that kind of eliminated that big concern for me. And I think that it isn't great, it's not perfect, but that gun violence is a problem in our community. And as a gun owner, I don't think that it is going to be a problem for me to get additional guns, should I ever need to. So I am for the gun ordinance.
Okay, alright. So 721-1290 is our number, 1-800-568-5309. I'm sure John King has, has questions.
Oh, certainly do. And I know you have questions, too. You're just too cowardly to call in. The phone number, 721-1290. Do it now before the lines fill up. This happens every time. We hate to lecture you, but it does.
This time, we'll start with Rick.
Well, question for you, Rick. You had mentioned getting into the race about the water, the water acquisition. And I guess I wanted to hear your thoughts on that and all the candidates' thoughts on the water deal. I'll ask the same question I've asked every other ordinance. So this is one I think is kind of tricky either way. We're already well into the deal. And my question for those that are supporting the deal is, how much is too much to spend on the water system? And my question for those that aren't for the deal is, why back out now since we've already put so much money into it? So I'll let you have your question and time with that, and give us your position. Go ahead, Rick.
Well, there, there are times to get out of something, as before you drowned, in this case with the water system. They're talking 100 million to 110 million for an acquisition. And that is way, way, way too much for Missoula with, where we have an existing water system now that's being run adequately.
Now, what about the, the money that's already been spent simply in the effort to acquire it? I mean, is that, is there some upper limit there? I mean, right, over $5 million now?
Oh, yeah. We've spent over $5 million, and I think that's enough. We had to, we had to get out.
Okay, so, Michelle, grab that microphone, bring it over. So let's talk about the water system from, from your perspective.
Sure. So to let you know where I stand, I am supportive of the city owning our own water. And I don't know what I would have decided at the very beginning, whether or not we should have gotten into it. But we're into it. And it's a good question, John, how much is too much? And I don't have an answer for you. I don't think that we're there to let you know where I'm at. I will be, when elected, I intend to continue supporting this effort. And I will become more educated in it. And I am ongoingly being educated on this topic, but it's a tricky one. I'll pass this over to you.
So, Michael?
Yeah, I actually really think that the purchasing of a modern, Montana Water Company is a good thing. I do believe, however, there needs to be a lot of adjustments. Take, for instance, we should not be allowing the City Council to establish an even more abusive water user licensing system. I believe that we should be establishing conservation districts overlapped with neighborhood districts. And then each neighborhood can design culture master plans and implement their own watershed irrigation. And then more importantly, establishing a public trust, like Water Trust or Joint Stock Holding Company, for the people to be the actual owners. They can be secured in like a certificate of water rights.
So basically, each, each, each homeowner then would be a shareholder in the water company? Is that what I hear you saying?
Absolutely, yep. That would, that would be the big push for me.
Go ahead, John.
So, the main question, though, was how much is too much? I think it would be a good idea if my family owned a boat. We don't, because it costs too much. So what, how much do you think we should spend on the water system?
Well, I think that we should be having a complete appraisal of the whole waterworks system first.
Well, it has been, but we, nobody will tell us how much it is.
That's, that's what I was trying to get to. Judge Karen Towns said, she said, you know, wait for the public hearing to come out, and it's just not enough time to do it. And right now, if you actually look at the assets appraised already, about 10 years ago from Montana Water Company, it comes to about 160, 170 million. So we could really get into a lot. And that would be the caps that I would be considering. But to balance that, you could also, at a city level, since you're talking about eminent domain, in order to cut back on those policies, start purchasing the mineral interests within the creeks and the rivers and streams. And then, you know, that can add to the balance sheet and then cut back. And there's a bunch of other, you know, economic and financial aspects that the city could go into that could bring down the cost, yet, you know, secure people certificates of water rights.
Marilyn, thanks for calling. Go ahead.
Good morning. I'd like to ask each one of them if they know what socialism is.
Okay, if you know what socialism is, alright. That it? Okay, thanks for the call. So who wants to, who's starting? Rick, you're up first.
Well, I'm not exactly sure what socialism is, but Margaret Thatcher did say, in socialism, the big problem is you soon run out of other people's money. So socialism seems to be big government controlling your lives. And that's the case with this water system. We, we need to stay out of that. That, that can be and should be run by private interests.
Okay, so Michael, what do you think? Well, do you know, what is your definition of socialism?
Well, from what I understand, when I taught, socialism was basically controlling a production by the local government, or just by the government in general. Very close to fascism, you know, as well as communism. But communism's more like eliminating property rights while fascism is supporting special interests. But yeah, no, I think there's a big difference between socialism and social progressivism. And what we see here in Missoula is social progressivism. And that's a multifaceted and not something easily can be explained. But a lot of things are occurring, and it's bringing more towards the health and the welfare of the people. That's what it originally was designed for. But yeah, here locally, as it's applied, it's not quite wise.
Okay, Michelle, do you have a, do you have a definition for socialism?
Hi, Marilyn. Thanks for the call. My personal definition of socialism, when put on the spot, is-
Which is what we're doing.
Yeah, exactly. This is kind of the, the six-month-long endeavor I've been on anyways, is a government in which social programs are by and large run by the government. And a lot of welfare and safety net services are provided for individuals who may not have that otherwise. Thank you.
Okay, alright. So go ahead, John.
Alright. Here's another fun one. Alright. It's actually a question I've asked the other candidates as well. If you were to give this current City Council a letter grade, what grade would you give them and why?
Okay, we'll start with, Michael, we'll start with you.
Well, I'd say probably a C, to be honest, in my opinion, you know. And the reason why I say that is because what we've seen is just overspending that has really no great impact for the people, as they should be benefactors. And this is the way that we've had established our structure. You know, it is by all legal means, a consolidated city-county government. And like I said, we can get into that even more. But big, big ordeal is we have too many boards upon boards, offices upon offices. And very rarely do they even provide a good public service, or do they ever, you know, carry out fieldwork? So, and I see a lot of the reasons why we have all these bureaucrats is because the current, I'd say a lot of the current City Councilmen, they, I believe, aren't doing a full best ability of what they can be doing within their jurisdiction as a, you know, City Councilman.
Keeping in mind that City Council's a part-time job. I mean, you know, you can't expect them to work full-time, right?
No, actually, I believe that's, you know, completely opposite. You know, even though if it's supposed to be a part-time job, and you're supposed to put your whole heart and soul into it, and, you know, calling it quit at 5:00 while there's a lot of people out there, you know, hurting, that's not, it's not cool in my book.
Alright, so Michelle, what do you think?
I would give them a B. I am a happy citizen. I am running for office because I want to continue the quality of life that I currently enjoy, and because I care about investing in our community. I will kind of take on the end of that conversation that we just had with Michael, because I think it's interesting to talk about part-time compensation provided to City Council members. You see a lot of council members who are retired and who are self-employed. And as an individual who has to work alongside my duties as City Council, I just want to mention that it's important to get lots of different voices. And as a working individual, I think that that will be a good insight for council. But I also agree with Michael that folks should be putting their whole heart and effort into council, and I look forward to that.
Okay, Rick, go ahead. Rick, what is, what is, you give, give a letter grade for the council?
Well, a letter grade I'd give them is a D. And I would explain the City Council in two words, personal agendas.
Let's get Candy on the line. Candy, you're on with Rick, Michelle, and Michael. Go ahead.
My question is, on the Reserve Street $5 million bridge that goes to Nowhere, what is the city's participation in this? And why do we need this instead of making Reserve Street more walkable?
Okay, thanks, thanks for the call. So, Michelle, we're going to start with you on this one.
So if I understood correctly, the question is, why do we need the bridge, as Candy says, to Nowhere? And why aren't we investing in Reserve Street?
And what, what is the city's participation?
What is the city's, thank you.
Thanks, Candy.
So, I too wonder if anyone will be using this bridge. And I also wonder why they can't just take a crosswalk. And I think that it's going to move forward. I think it'll get passed. I think I would have voted against it. I'm not sure, because I wasn't there at the time. But I can say that I think the city has a large participation, because MRA is investing funds, and that had to be passed by the city. And so I, I think that the answer to that question is, you know, 100% involved with that, and that it will, it's just kind of a red herring to talk about investing in Reserve Street to make it more walkable, because the funds wouldn't have gone there, ever.
Michael, so what do you think about the bridge to Nowhere? And I would like to know more about this, to be honest with you.
Just so you know, I'm pretty sure that's not the official title.
Well, there, there is one in Alaska that's being called the Bridge to Nowhere, but I think that's where the reference came from. So go ahead, Michael.
I actually think this is one of the better projects, even though there was a bridge to Nowhere. It does actually help out trade and commerce in some aspects. And then, but I do agree with the caller, they should have, any design that the city comes up with, it should be integral for not just vehicles, but also bikes and, you know, walkways. But as for public participation, you know, that was primarily a City Council ordeal. Here in Missoula, we don't even really have public participation. We have public involvement where individuals can show up, make complaints. But they, the people themselves currently do not have any decision-making authority.
But we don't have a vote.
Right, exactly. That's-
Basically, our say is on who we decide to vote for to represent us.
Correct. That's, that's why one of the biggest things I'm always pushing for is to get the neighborhoods more involved. And then the people themselves who make up councils, they can actually have direct decision-making. And then if they want to build a bridge in their neighborhood, whether it's rural or urban, you know, then they actually have the opportunity to do so. And even contract out, you know, review the budget, the whole nine yards.
Alright, so Rick, what do you think?
Well, Candy, I, I hope this is just a work in progress and not an architectural flaw. And we'll just have to go from there.
Now, could somebody please tell me what the heck this thing is that they're talking about? Because frankly, I have no idea what they're even talking about. Forgive me for being Mr. Ignoramus here. Isn't there already a Reserve Street bridge? I mean-
Sure. So think geographically, we're up at the south side of Reserve, close to Brook Street, near the Auto Zone, and on the other side of the street, the loose caboose. It's a grade-separated bridge that would be above grade, that would allow bikers, pedestrians to travel over Reserve Street. It would serve as a gateway to our community. So the bridge would have like a welcome to Missoula.
I got you, okay.
And that is, and it would help do the final completion of the Lolo to Missoula Trail.
Because I'm, I'm, like, there's already a big bridge over reserves. I mean, but, okay, forgive me. Now I know better.
And it would also serve to stop the oversized loads. And I think that's a backdoor way of getting around that.
Okay.
No, it wouldn't. Excuse me. It would, it would be removable, kind of like a Lego set. And so the idea is that when people need to use 93 for the Highway 93 purposes, they would have that opportunity, which is interesting to me. How much is that going to cost, you know? But I don't think, sorry, Rick.
Well, John, John's really-
That's what they're telling you anyway.
John's really good at Legos.
Now, I, I love that Legos were introduced to the conversation. But when you said the oversized load, you're talking about the oil equipment transports, right?
Yes, sir.
And so I guess the question is, for all, because I don't know either, haven't heard this before, who pays for the Lego disassembly and assembly?
That would probably be the Montana Department of Transportation.
Or, or the oversized load.
Or, or the company that's shipping them, yeah. Anyway, but what do I know? I didn't even know the darn thing was, yeah. So let's, Peter, shame on Peter. Let's get Ray on the line. Ray, you're on with our candidates. Go ahead.
Hi there, folks. Thank you. I was wondering, what would be your feelings on a mandatory sentence for possession and/or use of, on conviction of felony with possession or use of a hand of a firearm in commission of a felony?
Alright, so let's see if we can get started on that one. So Rick, why don't you start on that?
There are already laws in place. If you use a firearm in the commission of a burglary, it becomes an aggravated burglary. Aggravated robbery, same thing. I'm, I'm really shy on mandatory per se sentencing. But for the use of a firearm in any crime, it should be prosecuted and it should be stiff.
Right, alright. So Michael, what do you think?
Well, I think these are issues of the court, really, not for City Councilmen, or even county commissioners. I'd say the biggest thing, though, is what we've been seeing here locally, or municipal judges enforcing city and municipal code, and use that to prosecute people, even though the district courts have told them, you know, you can't do that. You can only prosecute on state law, because that's, you know, the only law that you can have punish people. But yeah, when it comes to aggregated assaults or just increased crime, you know, I would have to really say, any deadly weapon and use of that would not be very community-like. But again, these are left for the courts mostly.
Alright, so Michelle, what do you think?
Yeah, I'd just echo Rick. These laws exist. There is a response for that. And the judgments should be stiff.
Yeah, the City Council has very little to do with something that's already part of Montana Code annotated. So, anyway, except to pat the police on the back and say, go get them. Get right to the phones and say, good morning. Dean, good morning, Dean. Thanks for holding. You have a question for our candidates?
Hey, good morning. Thank you for having me on. My question for the candidates is this. Based on the recent vote by the City Council to bring the gun ordinance to a public hearing, they appear to support the passage. Should this pass, you will be tasked to manage the consequences. The city of San Francisco wrote the NRA a check for $380,000 for court costs in a very similar case. The mayor presents the budget, obviously, to the council, and you'll have to vote on it. How do you feel we should pay these likely judgments against the city? Levy the taxpayers for it? Cut budgets in the city? If so, what budgets do you think you should cut? That's the question.
Okay, thanks, Dean. So Michael, we'll start with you. So if, if, if there are litigation costs, according to this thing, and the city loses or whatever, so what, who should pay for it?
Right. Well, the question I had was, was he referring to the gun policy or the water rights?
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah, it's the gun policy.
Well-
The proposed ordinance, yeah.
Yeah, the proposed ordinance, if it goes. And then what is the, you know, outcome if there's huge litigation involved? And who should pay for it? Well, you know, that's a really difficult question. We'll come to it when we breach it, you know. Right now, it's just a proposed ordinance. We haven't voted it in yet. If it does, then yeah, we will be looking at millions of dollars in legal fees just against one or two individual parties, like the NRA, or a couple of local individuals here. And if the city wants to go for it and then just suck up the litigation costs or the mitigation costs, whatever, then I really believe it should be taken out of the City Councilmen's wages, you know, until just keep working at it, you know. But no, we shouldn't be establishing bonds to pay for debt obligations that are based upon debt obligations, you know. So that's my opinion.
Okay, so Rick, what do you think? Grab that microphone there. Go ahead.
Of course, every time the City Council makes a big mistake, the taxpayers pay for it. And in this case, they, they should just back off and not, not go for this ordinance. It's been pointed out, you're going to get sued because you're wrong in so many aspects. It's, it's not just a law that's going to stop transfers between criminals, which is not going to happen anyway. It's, it's a backdoor way to get at the gun shows. And they're not even talking about that. And you're going to get sued by the gun shows. So there's going to be a lot of litigation if this goes through.
So who should pay for it?
Who should pay for it?
Yeah. If the city gets sued.
It would be nice if the City Councilman had to pay punitive.
Okay, so, okay, Michelle, your turn. If this thing passes and there is litigation, who should stand the cost?
If the ordinance passes, and if litigation were to ensue, I am not sure that that is the case, will happen. But anyways, this is hypothetical. I'm willing to go with it. I think that it would come out of the general fund or be, a bond would have to be passed.
So basically, would we go to the taxpayer?
It would absolutely be paid by the taxpayers, because how does the city run? Through taxpayer dollars. And so any question about paying for anything in this town is saying that the city is paying for them.
So go ahead. Now, go ahead, John, you had a question.
I'll throw a question in there. What about the exotic animal ordinance? This is a question all the other councilors had to deal with, so I let you wrestle with it as well. Did you support it? You think it was a good idea or a bad idea?
Okay, Michelle, you got the mic, so go ahead.
I went around a lot on this one, too. I think that I would have ended up supporting it. I'm not, I didn't think it was perfect, but nothing is. And as I keep being reminded, we have to start somewhere. And I think that this is a fine start, and I wish the best to the Shriners, but I don't think that it's all about that organization.
Okay, so Rick, you wanted to grab the microphone right out of our hot little hands, so go ahead.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what we're trying to stop by not letting animals perform in a circus, especially a shrine circus, basically, for children. in a circus, especially a shrine circus basically for children. What do these people think the animals are going to eat if they don't get to perform? They won't get to eat at all. Eventually, they'll be sold to game farms in Texas and they'll be staked out and used for canned hunts. And Michelle thinks I'm lying, but that's exactly what will happen.
Well, what do you think is going to happen to the animals? I mean, are they just, forgive me. Michael, we'll get to you in just a minute. But seriously, what, what's going to happen to the animals? Let's say, you know, Missoula or all, let's, let's say all the towns say, no more exotic animals, no more animals. So are you, are you going to adopt one?
So we're talking about animals that are currently in the system. And there will, I think that the answer is sanctuaries and that that is a successful method that will be fine.
Sanctuaries. Okay. So Michael, what do you think?
Well, I'm a big supporter of exotic animals and wildlife, the whole nine yards. I think instead of wasting time on this, on, you know, circuses, issues and whatnot, we should be focused on, on like the more important issues like invasive species that are, you know, like the pikes that's within our rivers is killing trout. And then other aspects too, you know, when it comes to wildlife. But like, like Rick said earlier, it kind of feels like a lot of this stuff is brought upon like by personal agendas with people within the city councilman, or within the city council, rather than having each councilman work together and bring forth community goals and objectives.
My question, urban deer, what do we do about them? Should they be hunted? Should they be left alone? So Michael, you're up first. Go ahead.
Well, it is state law. You can't fire a weapon inside any city limits. I mean, you can carry and do all that. That's not a problem.
Unless, unless the city comes forward with a proposal to make it legal under certain circumstances, right?
Well, I've, about six months ago, they were talking about the issue of having all these deer that were just flooding into the cities. And what they decided was, because it's really limited, only within a couple regions here in Missoula, to actually just allow the neighborhoods to come out with a policy and how they do it. But yeah, I don't believe, you know, you shouldn't be feeding deer. These are wild animals. They do have disease, you know, and they come in here looking for food because, you know, it's getting scarce out there. But no, I, I don't think we should be, you know, hunting them in the city. But I do believe that we should leave it up to the neighborhood councils in their region.
Rick, what do you think?
Well, as a member of PETA, which is people eating tasty animals, I...
Go ahead.
I, I, I'm really contrary to that with, with the deer situation. I watched two big buck deer all summer, walking around my neighborhood, eating on the lawns, eating people's flowers, enjoying themselves. Some jerk with a bow got them one night. It's illegal to fire a bow, a BB gun, a rifle, a shotgun, anything in the Missoula city limits.
Right.
So other than poisoning these animals, which is insane, because you'd get other animals too.
Just live with it.
Just live with it. They're deer.
I will throw in this. Other cities have policies like Helena that are, well, I'll let Michelle throw that.
Good. Grab that, Michelle. Go ahead. What, what do you think? Urban deer?
Stealing my thunder. Get out of here. I too have a lot of deer in our yard. I thought we were talking about the same one, but mine are still alive. So must be a different set of deer. And yes, as John mentioned, Helena is a community that has an urban deer plan. And I think that, I'm not certain, but I think that it's housed within like their Parks Department or something. And those individuals are given the authority to eliminate the deer in their community. And I would love that. But this is a decades-long conversation in our city, and I just don't anticipate it going anywhere.
I've tried talking harshly to them. I've tried, we tried the whole birth control thing. It doesn't work. They don't listen. You know, I'm being, I'm being facetious here, but...
If, if you checked with the Missoula Police Traffic Unit, you'd find out how many deer are hit in Missoula. And it's a surprising amount.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot. Absolutely.
By the way, our traffic deer hitting ratio just went up. We're the second worst state in the union for hitting deer with our vehicles, leading to lots of death and of course, economic fallout.
Okay, so we have to get some more callers on. So asking real questions here. So Wade, you are on with our candidates. Go ahead. What's your question? Hello, Wade?
Wade on M.
Wade?
Lee.
Are you there, Wade?
Oh, this is Lee.
Lee. Well, okay, that's close to Wade. So Lee, what's on your mind, Lee? Go ahead.
I just wondered, wondering how the candidates here feel about the city council, if they believe that they've had an anti-business attitude right now and before, and why or why not, if they think that way?
Okay, so let's start, let's start with Rick. You got the microphone there in front of you.
Well, if you don't think they've got an anti-business attitude, try starting a business. Sonic claimed they were going to have Sonics here, two of them, two years ago. And they've had so many conflicts with the city. We don't have a Sonic yet. People ought to be up in arms about that if nothing else.
All right. So Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. As a small businessman here in the city, it's just been absolutely difficult to get just contracts, clientele, the whole nine yards. And what it really is, it's the result of the mayor having a Missoula Economic Partnership, where special monopolies are granted. And what we've also seen under the mayor's Better Business Initiative is he allows foreign corporations to come in here using taxpayer money. And they come in and they take over entire market fields of activity, like in all matters of trade and commerce, muscling small mom pops businesses out. And yeah, if city councilman, that'd be the one, the very first thing I would do is just end all these resolution orders that the mayor has put through and actually establish free trade, open market places and whole nine yards.
Okay. Michelle, what do you think?
I've heard both sides. Business owners who found it fairly easy and business owners who are absolutely not, not a business owner myself. I can't say how the climate has been to me.
A lot of that depends on what business you're in.
I think that you're right. And I think that zoning is a big piece of it and how many different departments you need to go through. And so I think that there have been efforts to improve this and that those efforts are ongoing and something that I would really pursue.
Okay, I'll tell you what, we have exactly two minutes left in the program. So Catherine, I'm so sorry you didn't get your question in. But I'm going to take the last two minutes here to let our candidates just kind of give a closing statement. So you've got the microphone there. This is Michelle Cares. So tell us why we should vote for you for City Council Ward Six.
Michelle Cares, you should vote for her because she is capable of listening and talking to anyone. And as we've talked about today, the city council is absolutely the way in which citizens get their voice heard. We are the interface between the city and the citizens. And so I look forward to talking to Ward Six and non-Ward Six citizens about what they care about and moving forward through those issues. I have, I'm a 23-year-old consecutive, or I'm not 23 years old, excuse me. I've been on a team sport for 23 years in a row, which I think reflects a team attitude. And I really think that city council is essentially a four-year-long team building exercise. And I look forward to it. Thank you so much for having me.
Okay. Michael Ellsworth, go ahead. Why should we vote for you?
Well, for the people in Ward Six, I will most definitely give you any, you know, aspect that you want to bring forth and actually engage in decision-making at the neighborhood level, I'll be bringing that to the city council table. But most importantly, I also have three initiatives, growth through agriculture, neighborhood stabilization, and community revitalization. Growth through agriculture is pretty self-explained, but we switch away from an inward growth policy to expansion of communities, smart and orderly growth. Neighborhood stabilization is just a, you know, business. And then community is just integrating more, the right to participate.
Okay, 30 seconds. Rick, go.
Well, I'd, I'd like to point out that everybody that moves here from out of state says, this is a beautiful community. You've got friendly people, lots of recreation. Let's change it. I'm a fourth generation Montanan. My name's Rick Brown. Vote for me.
All right, thank you. Thanks to all of our candidates, Rick, Michelle, Michael. Best of luck to all of you.